Hey. Hello, everybody. I believe 3592, is that you, Commissioner Glenn?
Yes, it's me.
Okay, perfect. I'll get your name changed on there. Let me get this here. Um, okay, just a second here. All right, so let's go ahead and get started. I'll pull up the items that we were going to discuss today. Just a second here. Sorry, guys.
Kayla, do you want to share?
What's that?
I'm sorry. I was gonna ask if you want to just share your screen, or I'll type them in as you announce.
Yeah, absolutely. So first, I wanted to talk through the EDC ask. So you can put that as topic number one. Number two, talk through courthouse PPE. And then number three, we will talk about the MOU with the City of Ludville for the tower's location. So that way, we can get everybody an opportunity to get on the line there. So I will go ahead and start first with this topic number one. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Number two was PPE, did you say?
Yes, for the courthouse. And then number three would be the MOU tower site with the city. That way, we'll give the sheriff an opportunity and the mayor an opportunity to join us for the MOU site. So we'll talk through number one. The EDC had contacted me about supplementing their grant programs for small businesses in our community. They have done a grant program similar to the city's. They had taken $30,000 out of their reserves and out of the savings that they had from not having an executive director at the first part of 2020, and given out grants to, I believe, let me see here. I believe it was 12 businesses. Yeah, to 12 businesses. They had given them $1,800 grants to help them with their expenses through the COVID pandemic. And it was open to those businesses that had not applied to the city or the PPP, the Payroll Protection Program, through the federal government. And so it was just a $1,500 grant. So they awarded $18,000 of the $30,000. And then they had brought that program back. And with the remaining $12,000 that they had allocated, we're giving businesses an additional, or other businesses that didn't have the opportunity to apply $500 towards expenses. So opening that up again with a smaller dollar amount to hopefully hit some more of those businesses. So they were looking at getting those awarded either today or tomorrow, actually, maybe Friday, and had approached me about the county assisting with that program. They have enough businesses to supplement or complete the $12,000 that they have remaining. And if they were to award all of those businesses and not have the lottery process, they would need an additional $4,500 to give each of those businesses that applied a $500 grant. So I know that, you know, $30,000 is a pretty significant chunk of money from the EDC to be able to do that for our businesses in our community. They're also working on starting their revolving loan program internally. So that will be up and running sooner rather than later. So I wanted to bring that to my board members to ask if we could potentially think about deciding on tomorrow that ask of $4,000 to fulfill that grant program to small businesses in our community. So Commissioner Glenn and Commissioner Maj, if you have thoughts around that questions conversation, I'd be happy to answer. I've sat on the EDC board for the past couple of years and sat through the meeting of them starting this grant program, so.
I think, no, I'd be happy to contribute here. I think that'd be important. Is there, just remind me, is the EDC paying the, any expenses directly? Or is that an open, kind of uncommitted $500?
It's an uncommitted $500 for, excuse me, for businesses to be able to spend on their essentials. So they're giving those businesses the opportunity to use that to pay for merchandise potentially that's been received but not been paid for. So outstanding expenses like that assist with rent or utility payments or broadband or water sewer bills. Excuse me, but leaving that to the discretion of the business owner.
Was the, was the second wave just $500 awards? Or was that really what was, what seemed to be needed and requested?
So the second wave was actually similar to the city's structure of they took in all the applications that they had when they initially announced the program, embedded all of those applications, and from those applications determined the amount of funding that they had remaining, and then opened that back up for an additional $500 to reach as many businesses as they could with that $500. So it's similar to the city's of just an additional wave of applications with the same kind of protocol of giving them a grant for those expenses.
So with the, with the funds, they just wanted to support as many businesses as they could?
Yeah, they want that reach to go as far as it can to supplement those business owners.
I don't, I don't think I have any other questions.
Commissioner Glenn, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Kayla, I know, I'm sorry, I know you said, I do have a question. I know you said they, they wanted to reach as many business owners. Did they, was, was that in the spirit of kind of expediting some sort of financial support? Or were there any that were clearly, you know, in need of a greater amount?
And? I don't know at this point any of the specifics, but I could definitely ask somebody from the EDC to join us tomorrow.
Okay.
Or I can send those questions to John at the EDC as well.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's more not necessarily for this request, just kind of for us to continue learning what folks, what business owners are really needing and how, how that, how that looks across the board and what the breadth of that is.
Okay.
It'd be helpful to share.
I can definitely, I can definitely send that to John and ask if he has any further information on that. Absolutely. Okay, wonderful. So I think that's. Yes, Janine?
I just, I just wanted to point out too that the recent federal release of funds and the local, that'll be going out to local governments. I do think a big piece of that will be small business grants and loans as well. And I did reach out to Kristi, or I followed up with Kristi Doon today from DOLA and asked for any information that they might have about funding. And I know there's a lot out there, so I'm, I'm checking with a few folks too to see if they can, we might just need to, on that fundraising committee of the Economic Recovery, dig into what's available for businesses out there and get a good sense of that. Maybe we could create a session even on that particularly.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Janine, if you could assist us with some of that information gathering, gathering and data collection for us to share out, I think that'd be really helpful. It sounded like from the Business Town Hall this morning that there's still quite a few businesses that are severely struggling. And so I think we want to be able to provide them with as many resources as we can. So I think anything that you can provide would be extremely helpful. Does anybody have anything else to add to that first topic? Right there? Okay, so we will move into number two, which is PPE for the courthouse. I'm glad that we also have Sarah Dallas on the line. Potentially, we can talk about this in a broader sense, maybe. Amber has done a bulk order of hand sanitizer. She also has kind of made contact with a resource to get us some masks. And so I think we really wanted to talk about what that looks like at the courthouse. Did we want to provide masks for people that are coming in to do business? Do we want to provide masks to our employees? What does that, that look like? Chris, I haven't had an opportunity to connect with you. I had received a link yesterday about the governor's office requiring PPE for public employees. Do you have any information about that?
I have not heard anything more on that. That were updated as of last Friday, I believe.
Okay, yeah, it just extends the mandate that requires critical business owners to wear non-medical-grade face coverings.
Okay, I thought you were talking about in regards to, to local government stuff. The, yeah, the essential business, any essential businesses, employees are mandated to wear face coverings.
So that would include us?
Yes.
Do you want me to pull that up? Would that be helpful, or is that, I mean, it sounds like we kind of came to that conclusion there. Do we have, so, so, so by virtue, I know at one point, Chris, you had said that we'd, we'd have to, anyone who requires it would have to supply the N95 or whatever that mask was, which we can have a supply for people to use should they not have their own non-medical grade.
I was gonna say that, that's the distinction. That's why they're using face coverings versus the term mask.
Right.
You can mandate face coverings. If you mandate masks, then they have to be the N95 under the OSHA standards. So it's very important not to use the term mask when you talk about the city, but to use face coverings instead. And that way, it gets you out of that N95 requirement.
So would it be, would it be then appropriate for us to place a bulk order of masks? Amber?
If you can get it, absolutely. You should have something available for folks, not only for your employees, but also for folks that would be coming in to your facilities. Just to make sure that you have the opportunity to protect everyone, including your staff and visitors. But they don't have to be the N95 ones.
Okay, and I don't think that those are what Amber had, I think Amber had found something other than the N95 ones. You can correct me if I'm wrong, Amber. Chris, what if we have staff or visitors that do not want to wear a facial covering?
Well, you cannot deny them services, but you can try to address an accommodation of that. For example, it's possible to be able to meet with them outside or something to that effect, or virtually, like through this. It depends on the nature of the business or type of services they're asking for. But you can't, you know, you can't deny them access to services that the county's required to provide if they refuse to wear a face covering in the facility. And I think we talked about that in conjunction with Colleen and perhaps Janine about, you know, health department-type services and such as well. So if they absolutely refuse, then my suggestion is to have some sort of an alternate approach to providing them with the information or the services that they need.
Okay, and what about staff? If we have staff that's not complying with that governor's executive order?
No, you know, you can, I think you can mandate face coverings for them if they're interfacing with other people and cannot exercise appropriate social distancing, you know. And that's the challenge with the social distancing aspect is, you know, if they are in a, for lack of a better word, confined space, they're in, you know, a space that does not allow for more than six feet, you know, apart and such, then it is appropriate to mandate that they wear face coverings. Because it's not just, it's not just for their protection, it's to protect others from them as well.
Thanks, Chris. Amber, do you want to talk to us about the pricing that you found on those masks?
So Kayla, I really didn't look that far into it because the pricing really varies from place to place, and it varies a lot based on how many you're ordering. So it would be really helpful for me if the BOCC could make a decision on the amount that we want, and then I can look more into the pricing.
What kind of quantity would you, would you think, Sarah or Mark?
I was thinking 500 off the top of my head with the amount of people who are continuing to remote work and then having some for, if they would be, I mean, I'm assuming they're disposable, but they could be reused?
Yes, they're disposable.
What's the, what's the ordering quantities that are offered, Amber?
It, again, it really varies depending on who the distributor is. So you can get them in anywhere from packs of 10 to packs of 2,000. So I think it really, if you just tell me how many you want, I will find that number somewhere.
Sarah Dallas, would the city also need masks? Would it be helpful for us to do a bulk order and include you on that?
I think that question would be better directed to our police chief and our fire chief. I don't, they've been handling their own supplies. I think from city hall staff, we're good. We have our own ones, and we only have five, so I don't think we need that. But I do think maybe a check-in, Amber, with Sage Bertolus and Dan Daly would be a good thought.
This is Chris. I was actually gonna reach out to you, Sarah, to ask about ordering face coverings and stuff, disposable ones for the municipal court. That's gonna be a requirement once we reopen. So Kayla, in response to that, if I shift hats here and just say for the municipal court, if there is an opportunity to combine with a bulk order, I think that would be a good idea for us to be able to get them at a lower cost.
Okay, well then, hearing that, I can be executive about that and say, yes, we would like to participate, I guess. I don't know what quantities you're ordering, but we would participate and be billed for court and fire and PD. I don't think it would hurt to have extras.
Yeah, we should up that quantity then.
Um, let's. I will, go ahead.
Sorry, what's the delivery on that? Amber, do you know how back ordered it is, it might be?
I don't know because we haven't picked a vendor.
Okay.
So, but it looks like they're actually fairly available, at the, at least at what I was looking at yesterday. I don't think that there's as much of a backlog on those since they're not an N95 mask.
Commissioner Glenn, do you have anything?
No, but you have to realize that every employee should use a fresh mask every day. So 2,000 is a good place to start.
Right.
I think, yeah, I think 2,000 would be a minimum then after, you know, being reminded of the law enforcement and that kind of disposable, more frequent use.
Good point, Mark. Amber, let's, you and I work on.
I just made a note, yeah. Sorry, I just made a note in the chat that we need to coordinate that with Mabel if we're gonna try to get FEMA reimbursement for it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for that reminder, Janine. I will work with Amber to coordinate that going through Mabel and Crystal.
Hello, everyone. This is Amy. Sorry, I was late kind of being able to log in. I was just gonna say, there's been also some research around like wearing a mask more than 15 minutes that you're increasing risk to yourself by the moisture to the mask and drying virus to your mask. Do you have anything on that, Colleen?
I don't see Colleen on our call today, but I can definitely reach out to her. Or Kaylee, do you have any information?
Yeah, I think what the guidance that we're seeing, and we can clarify with Colleen, is, you know, once it does become soiled or wet, then it is no longer effective. So definitely, if, specifically for law enforcement, when you're out and about and you're talking a bit more frequently, I think that reminder to the staff on saying, as soon as it's a bit soiled, then time to switch out. But I would think in normal office settings that, you know, you shouldn't be going through it that quickly. Really.
Yeah, because I, I don't know. Yeah, because I, what I'm seeing is that they're finding that people that are wearing the same mask every day, that that's not healthy and that in turn creating other respiratory issues. And just what I've seen, like people are taking, wearing the same disposable gloves over and over, and they are wiping their eyes and their face with it and then putting those back on. So kind of defeating the purpose. And I've just seen that around our building.
No, I, yeah, definitely. And I think we, as an OEM in public health, if we do get a big order of masks, we can help push out some, through some best practices and some snapshots for folks to hang up in their offices and share out with their staff. But, yeah, I agree. It becomes not only not effective, but can cause some harm if you're using it improperly.
Right.
Thanks for that point too, Amy. And I think Amber will definitely want to think about that bulk order and being sure that we get enough to cover law enforcement so they can keep kind of a box or stockpile for their vehicles as well. So that they're not, so that they are able to dispose of those and get a new one as, as appropriate when they're answering calls, definitely.
And Sheriff, we.
Vehicles?
We just.
Go ahead, Kaylee.
We heard from the state EOC that they're looking at our PPE requests that we put in two months ago, finally. So we might be getting some masks. They're not N95, but that would be specific for, you know, I think Colleen had mentioned that for inmates and for transport, that there would be some needs for masks there. So if we do get it, I will update everyone on how we can use those.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
This is Janine, and I have a question, and maybe Sheriff has some suggestions on this too, or anyone else. It came up in our staff meeting. What's the best protocol in vehicles for wiping down and cleaning? And then should they sit for a certain amount of time before another person uses that vehicle? Or is there anything that SO or PD have done?
Janine, I actually have a service bulletin from CTSI regarding vehicle sanitizing practices and cleanliness that I can pass on to you.
Perfect. Perfect.
And I think for PD, they're, at the start of this, I think they all got assigned their vehicles and they don't switch. I don't know if that's still going on, but everyone's assigned to their own. And Sheriff, I apologize that I don't know if that was done at the SO. But for our lodging protocol, the recommendation for cleaning rooms is, once like a guest leaves, to leave it for a minimum of three hours so aerosols in the air can settle, and then you can get in and clean and disinfect.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't unmute. Thanks, guys. I really appreciate that. So with that, I think we will, I will coordinate with Amber and be sure to coordinate with Mabel and Crystal to get that to go through the appropriate logistical chain for potential FEMA reimbursement. And we will go ahead and place that order. Amy, I will connect with you after this to see what your recommendation is to purchase masks for your deputies and transport folks, and then we'll get that order placed. And then the next thing that we have on the list is an MOU with the city for the tower site. So I think Josh has been working on this, Josh and Kaylee and Sheriff Reyes. So Josh, if you kind of want to talk us through this talking point right now, and then we can go from there.
Sure. As I think everyone here knows, we did get the state-approved funding for the tower site. We're, unfortunately, with all this COVID stuff going on, we still have the rest of our jobs to do, which makes it a lot more fun. So we're trying to put the pieces together to get this project moving. One of those big pieces, as many of you know, is that we're gonna put this tower on a site that the city owns. So we need to discuss an MOU and what that MOU is gonna entail for us in the city. I know there's some factors that, especially with the monetary gain, that if the tower is used to house, I guess, outside source, like cell service or something, the leasing of that. And all those are gonna be discussions we're gonna have to have with the city to determine how they want to go forward with this MOU lease of this site. So I have, I found, because there's not a whole lot on the current EOC building that's up there right now as far as build permits and things like that, but I did find some very old lease agreements. This one's from 1995, I think. And an extension, and then one from 2003 for some lease agreements for search and rescue to use that site up there. So I don't know if this might be a good basis of a place to start with some of these agreements. But I'm open to thoughts on how we want to move forward with that as far as the city input and then the commissioner's input as well.
Yeah, Josh, this is Chris. I'm just gonna suggest that anything that was written in 1995 probably isn't the best, you know, format to use for it. And I expect that I could work with the city's attorney to put together an appropriate document for that. Sarah, do you want me, Sarah Dallas, do you want me to reach out to Linda or Christiana directly? Or do you want to do that and just have them contact me? What's your preference?
Chris, if you want to reach out directly, that's great. As Josh explained, it was one of the conditions on the conditional use permit approval process this past February. So it's also on that document. So if you want to CC me on an email and we can get that coordinated, that would be great.
If we don't, if we want to maybe reach out to. If we don't, if we want to maybe reach out to Office of Information Technology as well to get some sort of more recent template on this, I can do that.
Sure, I'm a big fan of not recreating the wheel.
I agree.
To be clear, we're talking about the entire site, because I think what happened that we discovered through the CUP process for the tower was that there was nothing in place in terms of a real agreement, other than some of these older documents that Josh has talked up into, to really set out all of the agreements between the two entities. And we need to also now fold in the tower component into it. So
Yeah.
Clear, Chris, we're talking about a full MOU for the EOC and the city's land and now adding in the tower.
Okay.
Do we know who owns the building on the land?
The EOC owns the building on the land, but the city.
The county, so the county owns the building, but we don't own the land.
Right.
And I have been unable to locate really any documentation for that building. I mean, Paul can speak to this, that when we went through the process of getting the tower site moving, and Sarah was there too.
Yes.
There was not a lot of documentation for that EOC building that exists there and as it stands right now.
Yeah, there was a, as you said, there's a couple of things, but nothing really detailed. I'll send that to you, Chris, but certainly I think we don't want to recreate the wheel, but we have to kind of start from scratch. There's really not much in terms of us as entities, but we can put something in place.
Yeah, that's fine. And if someone can also provide me with the copy of the CUP documentation, make sure that I understand those requirements as well.
So then, Chris, I'll do that. I'll send an email. I'll include you and Linda and Christiana with those documents and see if we can get the ball moving. That makes the most sense then. That'd be awesome. Thanks so much.
Does the board have any other questions on the project?
No, Josh, could you send out a list of those considerations?
Yes, we can send you. Sarah, can you send everybody the the CUP the CUP that we agreed upon, and I think that was February.
Yes, I can. And who, by everyone, who do you mean?
Can you send it to commissioners, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Sarah. Do you, do we also need to put in the MOU document the consideration of leasing space on the tower itself and the revenue sharing from that?
I had an idea on that, is that we could put it in there that, because we don't have an agreement right now, but it could be in that MOU that should that arise, then we need to sit down and make another agreement to.
Yeah, because Josh, if you were, will remember, one of the conditions that council had was if you decide to go that direction, that you come back to them to agree to that in terms of how much additional hardware is going to be on that tower.
Paul, do you have information on that right now?
No, I can tell you, there are no building permits. Well, there is one for the, recently for the, what is it? The temporary building, the cloth one.
Oh, for the mobile command unit?
Mobile command, yeah. We did permit that, but there's no other building permits on the site. And I don't know, would, somebody probably ought to tell me whether they want me to proceed, because I do have a contact with somebody that's interested in locating a cell on that tower. Would you like me to proceed with that?
I don't see any detriment to that. I mean, would there be anything upfront that we would have to do to facilitate that?
No, I just, just start the conversation. I started having the conversation before COVID. And then as that got going, we decided to wait until COVID was over, and it's not going to be over.
This is Chris. Sorry, I was just gonna chime in that to the extent we have folks that want to lease space on the towers, I've done a number of those type of agreements. So that's something that we could definitely work on. Also, depending on who it is, if it is one of the main providers, they have their own lease documents and stuff that they prefer to work from. So if we get to that point where you're considering letting them co-locate their equipment or whatever on the tower, I would like to be involved in the process to help with the contract aspects.
That's excellent, Chris. Thank you.
I also think it's a good point that, you know, when we initially had someone who actually built the towers, they said, hey, this is the bare minimum. We'll get you your dish up top, and that's it. But they could also provide all the information on what kind of space we need if someone was actually really interested in putting some equipment on there. So we want to do it right the first time. And that'll play a big piece in the RFP that we put out, too.
Do you think that, let's see, Sarah, when you're gonna, much, or Dallas, when you're gonna forward the CUP information to the board, does that include the act, the application information as well?
That the applicant submitted?
Yeah.
Please clarify that.
That the applicant submitted.
Meaning the county.
Yes, the county.
Yeah, I can send the application and everything that was submitted to the city. Sure.
Could you then include me in on that?
Yes.
Because I really would like to have a copy of the site plan.
Yeah, I'm drafting that email right now. I'll get it sent to you. Josh, and I'll include Kaylee, the commissioners, and Chris Floyd.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah. Paul, are you in the process of, or Amy, I don't know which one, is anybody in the process of securing a, to develop and create the site plan and the sketch plan for the the tower and the building?
That's what I wanted the site plan for, because it's a concept, it's not a survey. And we're probably going to need a survey. And I've been in touch with a couple of engineering firms that may also need a soils report. So I've contacted a couple of those, and they want to see a site plan. And to what it is that they want to do, I'm not enthusiastic about being able to get it done this spring or early summer. They're all booked.
Sheriff, do you have any, anything to add? Or any questions at this point?
I wanted to ask the group, because I know we had the last meeting we had, we were gonna, I believe, Paul, you were gonna reach out for those additional, like for the soil survey, if we needed that, and the land survey, and what I'm hearing you saying that we need an additional survey for that to happen.
No, no, the, what I, to be able to show is a picture of here's what we want, only we want it surveyed. I think, but I don't know, and maybe Josh and Kaylee, you can, or Amy, you can find out from the state, do we need a soils analysis too?
I think that was independent of what the city is going to require us to have in order to build the tower.
Sarah D., is that right? Is that a condition of approval?
Would you like me to, let me see if I can screen share really quick. Hmm, is this state, is this state inspected because we're taking advantage of that funding? And they'll be maintaining?
No, it will have to meet state specs.
Right.
But as far as to build the tower, they're gonna need to know that it's gonna be able to hold the weight, wind, et cetera.
I don't know that we have anything in here from the city that requires that there be a that a soil is required. So could we find that out from the state if they, if they need a soils analysis?
Josh, at our last meeting, we had those lists of items of things that we need to get done. Where did that come from?
The stuff that was covered from the state versus what was, what we're covering that I got from Pam?
On our checklist, the things that we need to get done so that we can get this tower done before the end of summer.
The soil analysis, I think that arose from when we met with Bearcom and Troy from, I can't remember the name of the tower company he owns. They, he suggested, Troy, the contractor, that a soil sample be done based off of freeze thaw cycles and stuff of that. And that would help with his bid on what they were going to need to put in a foundation and their sets for the tower itself. He said he wasn't sure if it needed to be performed, because he's not, he doesn't, not familiar with the soil in this area. But it's a common thing that has to be done, especially at altitude, because of how the ground works up here in the winters.
All right. Well, then I'll continue looking for an engineering firm that can do surveying and soils analysis. I don't think it's going to be very much, because the soil up here, actually throughout the county, is actually quite supportive.
I told him that as well, but he said it would still be beneficial to have.
Okay.
And especially to know how much soil is there and like how far the rock is down, things like that.
All right. And go ahead, should I go ahead and contact these individuals about, that they got ahold of me about wanting to, potentially wanting to locate a cell on that tower? Could mean a couple of grand a month.
Well, I think we need to get all the pre-groundwork done first to see where we're at with it before we get bring in other parties to it.
Yeah, I ordinarily would agree with that, and I think I still agree with that. But it's also possible that these other parties might be able to help us with this.
Well, would it be beneficial to send them our current tower design to see if they could co-locate on the tower with the space that we have right now?
Well, yeah, is that that Sarah is sending to us?
Should be. If not, I can forward what the state gave to us for what the tower needs to be.
I sent the entire packet that we received that became the staff report that included all of the submissions from the county, as well as the approval letter to you all. So if that's part of those package documents, which I think they were, then they're going to be in there, but I didn't send it as a standalone document, Josh. So it might be easier for you to just resend that separately.
Yeah, that's fine. I can, I can get it to Paul. Oh, no, it's in, it's in the email that she sent you, Paul. It's in the, the complete CUP hearing packet. There's the state documents are in there for what the requirements for the tower site that we're planning to build. Because the builder that we met with also said that with our current tower size and stuff, it might be that we don't have, like, it might be difficult to co-locate if the tower isn't built and maybe a little bit bigger. Or, you know, depending on the specifications that the state required for us to have those dishes and this, you know, the web antennas and the receivers is, as far as the room that the cell service would need to put a, you know, an effective, I guess, another set of signal transceivers up there, then I, that's just, he was, he brought up that our tower, as it's currently designed, might struggle to locate those.
Okay. But, but, but this is an independent tower, tower construction company that the state will use?
Yeah, this, well, we'll put out the request for proposal for the tower company. The gentleman we met with said he's done, I think he said, three of these recently. They just finished one up in Steamboat. So it's, he's not unfamiliar with the process of putting one of these DTR tower, and especially with working with the state, that was a big point he made, that he knows Pam from OIT. He's worked with her before. So he, his information was very valuable. We got that a month ago or so. I don't know, time's kind of blurry these days. But.
Who was that person again, Josh?
His name was Troy. I have his card somewhere, but I can't remember off the top of my head.
He was with United. And you can see his work if we can, I'll respond to Sarah's email and sending the website just to see, if you want to visualize what a site looks like, I think just that piece is beneficial in itself.
I'm gonna send the email that Sarah just sent to us to my contact, because he might want to get involved in the actual construction of the tower as well. He also, somebody else, go ahead.
Uh, sorry, I just, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know if that is a little premature or adding complication, but I'll let Josh and Kaylee.
Well, the only reason I say that is because they told me that they know Pam and many of the players at OIT as well. And they have built some of their towers as well.
I don't see that being, I don't know, I'm gonna say illegal, because they still have to go through the bidding process, I believe. So, I mean, it might get them interested in being another potential applicant for the bid. So.
So this would be it. Would we, we would be putting out an RFP for a tower build?
Correct. We got a pretty good template from Delta County. They just put one up down there, and they sent us their RFP. So I've been going through that and tailoring it for what we need. Kayla, I don't know if you had a chance to find the RFP template for Lake County?
I do. Oh, sorry, Josh, I didn't mean to cut you off. I do have one, and I will send it to you now.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, because that's another part of this I've been working on is the RFP proposal, which that has a lot in the, up in the air as far as dates and stuff at this point. But just getting it out, out in front of it, I think is a good idea at this point. That's all I got on that.
So it sounds like Chris is going to work on getting that documentation to start the MOU for the property, is that correct?
Can you repeat that, Kaylee? You kind of, you kind of broke up.
Oh, sorry. Chris Floyd is going to start the MOU process regarding the EOC building and power. Correct?
I got the.
Kayla, I'm sorry, you're still kind of breaking up, but I think if you're asking for next steps, I think Sarah's going to follow up if she hasn't already done so, and send out an email to connect me with the city attorneys so that we can start working on the MOU process there.
Okay, perfect. And then aside from the MOU, then Paul, are you going to take the lead on working with Josh to get that, or Sarah to get that final preliminary site plan and get that over to a surveyor and an engineer? Is that correct?
I'll help with that as much as I can. That, I think that's a big next step. It's getting the site survey done. And like Paul said, they're full. So the earlier we can schedule that, I think the better.
Paul, do you have a recommendation of companies that would do the site survey? Or have anybody that you potentially?
Garble, garble, garbles. Yeah, I've got access to a lot of local or semi-local engineering as well as surveying firms. as well as surveying firms. And, and I think that they'd all be competent. They're all licensed by the state. So I think that whoever they are, I have, I've got a couple that I have contacted already, and they want to see a site plan, which just got emailed to me.
Paul, do you have an idea what that would cost? Because I think that the $5,000 was the threshold for an RFP.
Somebody say yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. But I think it may cost about $5,000.
Okay. I think if you can reach out to whomever you select and let us know what the estimate looks like on that, then we will know what our next step is, is if we have to take that out or what that looks like.
Okay.
Because if it's over five, that'll slow us down a little bit on that end if we have to put an RFP out. But that's a process we have to go through then. I'd like to know that sooner rather than later.
Okay. Agreed. Definitely.
I'm talking to a couple of these firms to do, to do both the survey and the soils analysis. If we broke that up and gave the survey to one firm and the soil analysis to another firm, they both together might be under 5,000 each. So that, that might speed things up.
I don't, yeah, that might be a good avenue to pursue, as efficiency, as, speedwise.
Okay.
Or, or could it be that one firm, and it could just be two different, two different things? You just send us two different bills?
I'll, I'll ask.
Yeah.
I'll tell them that we've got a $5,000 limit, and how they could accommodate that.
Thanks, Paul.
Would it be helpful if we just put together like a checklist and figure out what is we need to get to, and just kind of assign who's going to do what?
I've built one. Kayla and I use an app called Trello. It's on, it's a website and a phone app. I'll, I'll line that out in an email, and I'll send it out to everybody.
Okay, that would be great.
And I'll update it, obviously, with what we've talked about here today. So it'll get built out a little bit, fleshed out a little bit better than what it was already. So, yeah, I can get that done. But I think that's everything we needed to cover on the tower as it sits right now. I also need to jump over to the EOC call here in a minute. Does anyone have any other questions for me?
No, I don't think so. I think, Amy, do you feel, do you feel pretty solid in our next path forward with the, the tower construction?
I think if we get the, maybe just line out the tasks and then just start checking them off one by one so we can make sure that we've got it and we're not missing something, I think, just, yeah, I think if we can just know who's doing what, because I know Josh and Kaylee have been amazing at keeping the ball rolling, and Paul, I just want to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts where we don't need to, and, you know, if, if there's something else that needs to be worked on in the interim, that that's getting done.
Okay. Josh, would you mind sending kind of a synopsis from today of outlining who's doing what steps?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. I think that would be really helpful. If you'll copy us, Paul and Amy on that, and Sarah Dallas, that'd be great.
Can do. I'm going to drop off then and jump on another call. Thanks for your time today, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Thanks, Paul, and thanks, Amber, for being here. Commissioner Glenn, do you have anything else before we jump off?
No, I don't have anything.
All right. I'm going to, thanks. I'm hopping on the CCI call, so I will catch up with y'all soon. Thanks.
Okay, bye.
Bye. Have a good day.
You, too.